Michael.
Here.
Osowski, here.
Weber.
Here.
Muntzky, here.
Tommy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Item two point one, Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation briefing.
I'm Mr. Phil.
Yes, on this committee, the city council has asked for briefing on our role and relationship with Grand Forks Region EDC. So I'm I'm thankful that Keith Bond is here on behalf of the Grand Forks Region EDC. And I just want to give you context. Keith's going to talk about our contribution to the to the EDC, which is about, I think, three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, and he'll show you that. I just want to let you know that that amount is in twenty one sixty three, which is the city's economic development fund. That fund, the total expenditures for this year's budget, the twenty twenty three, is about six point six million dollars. And within the contributions line items, which is kind of all the various earmarks from events to arts to this, to that, to include this, of that six point six, well, one point two seven nine dollars goes to these various contributions, of which this three hundred and twenty three thousand would be in there. Just so you understand more global kind of what we where we allocate our economic development funds. And as you well know, above and beyond what we do in twenty one sixty three, we invest in infrastructure, we provide tax incentives in the city of Grand Forks, leads all that. So this is a really important part of of what we do to to move projects across the finish line. So that I ask Keith to come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Mr. London, good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Vice President Weber, I think President Sandy's on line if I'm not mistaken. So so I think it's a pleasure to be here today. And President Sandy, appreciate the suggestion a few weeks ago to come and provide an overview of the EDC. It's been a little while since since we've done that. And so it's a great opportunity. This evening, I just want to provide an overview of the formation of the EDC, sort of where we came from. What we got here, our mission, our governance, funding, operations, programming, and some metrics that we track. And you've likely seen the presentation. So you have a bit of a preview available to them. So next slide, please. Okay. In terms of the background or the formation of the Economic Development Corporation, our predecessor, not successor, because the foundation still exists, and I'll talk about that for just a second. But the Grand Forks Development Foundation was created in nineteen sixty seven. Businesses came together, primarily invested in land to be in a position to sell land for business operators, projects, individuals are looking to invest in economic development, industrial projects. In nineteen eighty seven, which is not on the graph here, the jobs of legislation was passed at the North Dakota State Legislature, which gave which gave North Dakota communities the ability to invest in economic development. And the leaders at the time, what I've been, what I've read in documents and talked to folks who were involved in the creation of the Economic Development Corporation in nineteen eighty eight, felt that they needed a more progressive and a more proactive organization to go out there and really develop opportunity and sort of bring them forth to try to create those types of things. So develop a package and bring them forward rather than just really sit back and wait for those opportunities to present themselves. So it really went transition from a more of a passive approach to a proactive approach. Excellent, please. In terms of the mission of the EDC, it's our role to expand economic opportunity for the citizens of the Grand Forks Region through industry growth and diversification. And that's a really important part of this definition, and I'll get back to that in just a second. But at the end of the day, it's our role to work with partners to expand economic economic opportunity in the region. Next slide, please. This is our board of directors. In two thousand and seven, we had a revamping of our governance structure. I had just joined the EDC in two thousand and six, so really didn't have a role in this change, sort of witnessed it occurring. But at that time, we were a little bit of change of what our organizations recall. We have a we had a board and executive committee. But in reality, the board was the advisory board and our executive committee was our board. So we changed those names. But in addition to that, we felt that we needed to have a place for the chief elected officials in our organization to be really connected to and responsive to the citizens of Grand Forks Region. So when we take a look at, we have three positions that are appointed by position. The mayor, or his or her designee, the county commission chair, or his or her designee, as well as the president, CEO, and at the present time, myself. Again, taking a look at the mayor, the mayor is the only position in the city elected that is elected by all of Grand Forks citizens. And we thought, I should say, they thought at the time, listening to the discussion, that that was the appropriate person to have on the EDC board because they were connected to the citizens. All of the county commissioners are elected by all citizens of Grand Forks County. So the decision at that time was to have the chair or his or her designee, and really for the, I don't know how long, but for quite some time, David Hengen has had the economic development portfolio. So whether he's been chair or not, he has been the designee from Grand Forks County. Excellent, please. Thank you. Within that organizational or governance restructure, we established the possibility and formalized our our ex officio board members. And when you take a look at those and paraphrasing our bylaws, we have the ability to point. And there's they're not limited, but it points to individual with leadership positions within organizations that have similar goals and support the mission of the Economic Development Corporation. So I'm sure you recognize all the names there. So I'll just point out a few. So we obviously have the base commander at present time, Timothy Curry. Barry Wilkert from the Chamber is here today. Thanks for for joining, Barry. U and D President Annie Amorcos, and the superintendent of public schools, Chair Brenner. As I thought about this presentation, thinking about that over the weekend, I'm not sure that there is another organization that convenes a leadership that exists both on our board and our advisory board on a monthly basis to talk about how to move the community forward. So we're really proud of how we structure ourselves in that regard. Next slide, please. This is a slide from a presentation I did to the League of Cities, but I thought was appropriate for this for this conversation this evening. They titled it structured collaboration. And so I talked a little bit about how the EDC is structured in terms of my bylaws. But really, that structure is reciprocal in terms of the relationship with the city. So I talked about how in terms of the EDC bylaws, that we have a spot on our board for the mayor or his or her designee and the county commission chair and his or her designee, as well as the ability to find ex officio members within organizations that, you know, we work closely with and that support the goals of moving the community forward. In terms of the city, the EDC board nominates the four non-city council members of the growth fund committee, and that is in city code today. And the EDC board provides recommendations on economic development projects. And that's included in your growth fund policies and procedures. So not only do we feel that we have greater partnership within between the city and the EDC and many other organizations, but we also put it on paper, and we make sure that we're structured and we maintain those relationships through that intentional collaboration. Excellent, please. Mr. Phil highlighted that we'd be talking a little bit about the funding of the EDC, and this is our budget for this year. We're going to start at the city, since we're here today, addressing the committee, the whole of the city council. The city Grand Forks provides just a little over three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars of support to the EDC on an annual basis that was approved in your budget last fall. Grand Forks County this year will provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of support that was also approved in our budget. We have some miscellaneous income of grants, interest income, and other minor things that add up to just under fifty seven thousand. But I really want to highlight the private sector, about one hundred and forty organizations that provide four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of support to the Economic Development Corporation. The next slide, I'm going to highlight the growth of that in comparison to the funding sources. Also wanted to point out, you know, proud of this as well, that for every dollar of funding support for the EDC, the EDC through the sources that I mentioned, leverages and brings in another true laws and thirty eight cents from the other sources that I listed. So we think it's a very good leverage for the investment, and we appreciate the support of the city and the county of all of our members and and moving forward. Next slide, please. So I chose to start this in two thousand and seventeen in terms of review, in terms of how the funding has has changed. Because that's the year that came the president CEO in July, July first of two thousand and seventeen. You take a look at the city and the county, and again, so appreciate the support. We couldn't do what we do without the partnership. Not only the funding, but the partnership that we have from from the various leadership, whether it's Mr. Phelan and any number of his team that I won't start to mention because there are so many, and and you folks here as well. But then take a look at the private sector collectively, when you put them together, the city and the county funding has increased since two thousand and seventeen by four percent. And compare that to the private sector, which has increased by, where's the number? Fifty percent. Thank you very much. Fifty percent since that timeframe.
Are we taking questions at the end? Or I'm just kind of wondering why there's such a gap between two thousand and seventeen and then we hop all the way over to twenty twenty two?
Mr. Soski, that those were the but this was a slide that we had in our budget presentation. If you're interested in every year, I can certainly get that. I gave some thought as to just simply taking off that now here. What we do from a budget standpoint is we take a look and we take take a look at how our organization has sort of evolved, both from an expense and a revenue standpoint over a five year period of time, because that's insightful. And then we also want to compare it with the revenue and the expenses look like the previous year. So this is just a slide we stole from our budget presentation is all.
And Mr. London, it seems that for the city and county, there were very almost no changes from two thousand and seventeen to twenty twenty three. The purpose of this slide is to demonstrate the growth in a private funding standard. We had two, yes, Vice President Weber, absolutely. That is the purpose of the slide. And again, I certainly don't want to the the support from the city is more than picked in the city and the county is more than picked as another funding. So not to say at all that that isn't important, and we couldn't have the impact that we do without that support. But I will say that what I have, and I think our board has done is prioritize private investment in terms of growing the impact of EDC. So we had two major bumps within there. One of them, if you recall, a greater grand folks way cooler than you think. A little bit going back in history, we asked the city and the county and the EDC and the chamber, CVB and U and D, I think I have them all to invest ten thousand dollars for two years to build greater grand folks like cooler than you think. But our commitment to those organizations was that we only wanted your support for two years. And if that had value, the private sector was wanting to need to stand up and so support and sustain that. So I want to say four years ago, maybe five, the private sector invested in additional investment in the EDC through membership to sustain that. Just this last year, we announced at our annual meeting last year that we were entering a campaign to try to raise resources to add an additional workforce person to our staff to have an increase in impact in that area. And we were successful and so fortunate that the private sector stepped up and provided sixty thousand dollars of additional support to do that. So those two years of additional activity, support, fundraising is the majority of the growth that we see here. But again, I want to emphasize that when we go, when we talk about new programs, when we talk about greater impact, we turn to the private sector, and that's important. Excellent, please.
In terms of core operations, this will be a quick slide. We have two main sort of pillars in which we work, business development and workforce development. I'm going to talk about those specifically. And in terms of supporting pillars, in terms of our work, we have communication, outreach and engagement, or simply said, marketing. And membership and management also, or simply said, administration. Next slide, please. Just wanted to give you a sense of how we're organized from a staffing standpoint. So this is organizational chart also from our budget presentation. So we have the EDC board at the top that we've gone over, and then myself as president and CEO. We have an operation specialist to really sort of just make sure that we're operating smoothly and efficiently. And we have a finance coordinator, which really is ten hours, they're quite frank, a little bit less than that. We really do most of our financing, or through radio march, but there's some things that we need to do in-house, and she helps with that. We have a workforce director, workforce development on staff that you've heard from her, marketing communications manager. We have two business developers, one focused on unmanned autonomous systems and one in terms of just, I shouldn't suggest, it's a lot to do, but general business development across all sectors. I like to think that we're a small but mighty team. But also they have the said at the point, we're in a large staff. So whatever, you know, we think that we've had a part of and support and accomplish can't be done without the partnership of many, many organizations as well. So there isn't, I don't think there's a single thing we do in isolation, just on our own. We do that in partnerships with many, many organizations. Excellent, please. This is important. I wanted to highlight from a business development standpoint, we focus on the primary sector. The primary sector businesses have two main components in terms of the definition. Number one, they add value to a product or service. It's not always manufacturing, but that's the easiest one to understand. You bring a product together, you make holes in it, and you bash around a little bit and put it together, and then when it leaves the door, it's a greater value. And then number two is you sell that product outside the trade region. So what we're doing in that case is we're supporting companies that bring new resources to our region to develop additional opportunities for others, individuals and other businesses. Next slide. We wanted to highlight a little bit of how that works. So we selected the frozen vegetable manufacturing industry in Grand Forks. And there is a predominant player in this industry in this in this definition, but just wanted to highlight that there there are more individuals that work in this than you might think. And there are other organizations that there are other people in this organization that you're thinking about right now that don't fit this definition because they have other jobs. But this was large enough to, I think, represent the impact of the primary sector in an agribusiness project. Excellent, please. So obviously, if you're doing agribusiness in the Grand Forks region, you're purchasing crops from regional farmers. So you make payments to regional farmers. Let those crops come in and they produce something. I won't say what, but they produce a product that ultimately is sold throughout the nation and throughout the world. And next slide, please. And from the payment of from payment of those customers on a global basis, in this case, resources come back to the community. And those resources are used to pay employees is to pay taxes. So what that means is roads and schools and services and to local purchases from local from from companies. So buy things from companies in the region. To further illustrate, we had Marshall and Price's Strategy Group run an economic, it's not MC, but or Remy, but it's a similar, it's a similar model to understand what that really means for our region. So there are three hundred, oh, next slide, please. All right. There are three hundred and forty one people that are associated with frozen vegetable manufacturing in the Grand Forks region. Those three hundred and forty one jobs support seven hundred and sixteen jobs in our region total. So that's a two point one multiplier. For every job that's associated with industry, there is more than another job that's created in our region. Just think about transportation, trade stuff, trade facilities, those sections. That's induced as well as the community growers, you need somebody at the grocery store and somebody at the auto mechanic. So that's that's direct induced and indirect jobs. That's a net, and those jobs have an average salary of sixty two thousand dollars, as determined by that modeling. Forty five million dollars worth of annual payroll and three point seven million dollars worth of state and local, state, federal and local taxes. Excellent, please. All right. In terms of our targeted sectors or strategic sectors, you know, we you can't be everything to everyone, and we have to kind of focus on the things that we do well, or that we have a possibility to do well. So I'm going to work from left to right on this screen. So agribusiness and manufacturing, that represents what I would call our historical or the sectors of our economy. Now, they've been here for a while, and we want to continue to support those. The middle, I think those are the things that are growing and doing well. UAS, I don't know that I need to spend a whole lot of time talking about that, but those are companies like Northrop Grumman and General Com- and General Atomics or Ice Side Trump Services, you know, large and small. Technology companies like Thread and Atrix Software is examples. And then moving on, biomedical and engineering, they're a little aspirational, but we feel that we have the assets to develop those opportunities. And primarily, those last four I talked about are supported by institutions of higher education, in particular, the University of North Dakota that have capabilities there. So biomedical, take a look at the med school. I think we can leverage that in the biomedical engineering department of the University of North Dakota. And energy opportunities with the ERC and the collaborative energy center at the University of North Dakota as well. Next slide, please. Um. So how do we develop opportunities? I want to spend a short amount of time on the left and the right and spend more time in the middle. We work on develop uncover opportunity in a number of different ways. One of them is through a referral network. North Dakota Department of Commerce will on on occasions, could be three, could be six times a year, have an opportunity that they move up to communities within the state and said, here's an opportunity. Are you interested? If so, tell us how you can support it. Existing clients occasionally, that'll happen when we have a supplier that we think would be nice to locate closer to us, and they're expecting your call. Or site selector networks, a site selector that we've met through a previous project might call, or we might bump into them at a conference or something, and then we might talk about an opportunity. Outreach, that's those are things that we do more proactively. So that's marketing, direct communication, social media. We're traveling to trade shows. We don't do a lot of that, quite frankly, but when we do that, it's mostly in UAS, like the AUVSI exponential, the largest trade show for unmanned autonomous systems. There's been a lot of discussion lately about the EDC in terms of how it, you know, whether it attracts the right types of businesses, and a lot of discussion about attract businesses. And we do do that, and we want to do that, and those are, you know, generally good headlines. But but generally speaking, not even generally speaking, there are studies that demonstrate that as much as seventy five percent of your sustained job growth from some companies that are in your economy right now. So our our business development team, the majority of their effort is spent meeting with existing primary sector companies, trying to understand what their needs are, what their pain points are, and to see if there's any way that we can connect them to resources that might, you know, eliminate those, so they have the ability to expand and create jobs and invest additional capital in our region. So again, we do do attraction and mostly in UAS, to be honest with you, and some in agribusiness. But the majority of what we do at the EDC is work with existing businesses in our region. Excellent. And I've already hit on this just a little bit, but really what we do is end up facilitating connections with folks. So we visiting with the company where the local or otherwise, they may they may need access to workforce pipeline training. We can connect them to those resources, permitting and zoning process. So we'd connect them to the planning office, a research development sort of industry engagement at the University of North Dakota, Northland Community and Center of College, or business support programs of the state of North Dakota as an example. Excellent, please. So that kind of covers at least what I'm going to talk about on on business development and workforce. I just want to highlight just a few things. So Becker Krueger was our director of workforce development in October, November, but in the fall, provided a presentation in terms of, you know, our workforce development portfolio. So I'm not going to go into any detail there, but happy to answer any questions. I'll just highlight them real quickly. The Career Path Academy, I don't know, we need to talk a lot about it. I think everyone knows what's going on there. Northern Valley Creps, well, more than a decade ago, we were part of a team that ultimately launched an event that marked to date over eighteen hundred high school sophomores and profile fast growing, high wage careers in our region. Career cultural education, that's the local for Grand Forks Public Schools. But really, just about every secondary education institution in the region has some element of CTE to try to connect students with careers in their region. The next slide. So that was K through twelve. The next slide really is targeted at full secondary. Intern Grand Forks, that's a program and partnership that the EDC has with the University of North Dakota to place interns in two focuses. Number one, with early stage companies, so sort of an entrepreneurship type of an experience or to sort of leverage our relationship with industry and businesses in the region to try to develop internship opportunities for those that have typically been not offered in the Grand Forks. They've typically gone to Minneapolis or other markets in terms of that. Career conversations is a partnership that we've had with the chamber. The chamber really leads that. That's a program where we have college students at U and D and Northland and Lake Region, University of Minnesota, Crepsin. And I believe there's one that we could get into. But anyway, regional institutions to try to to have them sit down with somebody typically in a management role at a company to just talk about what they do there. And the goal is, again, to hope to make the connections and so they so they hopefully take their first job in Grand Forks. Intern, Operation Intern is a similar program to Intern Grand Forks, just offered at the state level. I want to just highlight quickly Intern Grand Forks, seventy two noon internships have been funded. And a survey last year, eighty percent of those who went through the program last year took the first job in Grand Forks. So that's the impact that we're looking to find. Next slide, please. And then in terms of recruitment and retention, way cooler than you think, talked a little bit about earlier in the presentation in terms of how, you know, the public entities came to create it and launch it, and the public sector came to support it. It was really created in in at the request of Northrop Grumman, when they were established in the presence in Grand Forks, they said, I know, we can talk about all the really neat things that we're doing at Grand Sky, but we have no ability to market your region because we just got here ourselves. And so we need your help. And because of that encouragement and a lot, a lot of people and organizations, we're clearly think is created. So it's a way to amplify an employer's pitch. I always pick all true, maybe their first on the phone, but all true can tell them all the reasons why they want to all true. And cooler can tell them all the reasons why they want to live in the Grand Forks region. And then young professionals, you might wonder why that's there. I think that's an incredibly important organization. The city, the EDC, the chamber, and there is here, and a number of other businesses helped to sort of stand them up and create sort of two point oh one young professionals from my standpoint. But you were previously chair, my councilman, Kikami. Really, that and at that time, they went through a strategic planning process that was supported by the community. Ultimately, they hired a full time executive director and sort of the phrase at the time is somebody waking up every day thinking about how to attract and retain people in the region, particularly young professionals in the region. Two more slides, and then we'll be done. Just a couple of real quick, real quick sort of metrics that we track. So in terms of the primary sector, these are EDC clients. So these are the companies that we have worked with. This is hard information from job services, this isn't a phone survey or anything like that. We we don't, they don't give us any information per company. We say, here's our companies that we've worked with for this period of time, and they see there's a job growth, there's a wage growth, and there's a payroll contributions. From two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty two, we had a twenty six percent increase in jobs. We see client companies in the region. Forty for six, forty six percent increase in average salary. And if you have more jobs and more salary, that what that represents is eighty four percent increase in total payroll. That equates to one hundred and thirty seven million dollars in total payroll that's contributed in the region. We like to think that whether it's the city's three hundred and twenty three thousand, county's two hundred and fifty thousand, private sector's four hundred and sixty three thousand, that that investment leverages one hundred and thirty seven million dollars of payroll. And we're going through a survey. This is a survey for for annual meeting. It's not done yet. But so far, we've told eighty four million dollars in local purchases. EDC clients have purchased eighty four million dollars worth of goods and services from companies in this region. So that's a part of the primary sector. You're bringing money from the outside, and then you use that to support opportunities from others. One last one. I'm proud of this. So we're really focused to try to retain younger people, particularly for the university system, as well as recruit people for exciting opportunities. In terms of the YP demographic, I guess I'll stick with that. And the reason why we picked twenty five is we want to get sort of you and he out of the mix because that goes up and down from time to time. So twenty five is when all respect, vice president member, in terms of when, you know, people are in a permanent position for the most part. So in the last step, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty two, and we picked two thousand and ten intensely because that's really when we started the workforce development work of the EDC. And we've had twenty seven percent increase of people twenty five to thirty nine in our region, and that's compared to eleven percent nationally. And we've had an increase of school age children by eleven percent. And that's in contrast to the national average of two percent. I like to joke a little bit when you increase that demographic, that has an impact on second demographic. Both of those, we think are very positive. And that really, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Next slide. Yes. Is the end of my overview. Thank you for your time and attention. I'd be very happy if you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. London. Any questions from Mr. London?
I have questions. How does the EDC define success?
EDC defines success in a number of ways, but primarily are the metrics that we track, community growth, wage growth, capital investment, local procurement. I didn't prepare a list. I'm going out the top of my head. A lot of the things that you saw tonight, we track those things. And ultimately, you know, when I first started, I think I'm answering your question. Councilwoman Soski, you know, it was jobs, jobs, jobs. And in this labor environment, that's difficult, you know, because companies sometimes will invest, you know, millions of dollars to try to do more with the same or more with just a few more. So it's really less about the jobs and more about companies growing and investing capital in our region. But at the end of the day, we want to see those jobs grow. And so when we see twenty six percent job growth of EDC clients over a decade. So I guess those are the big ones. We take a look at overall growth of, are we having success in building permits in the county? Are we having success in libraries? But the main ones are jobs, wages, capital investment, I'd say.
In fact, if we just look at the sales tax, you suggested over the last ten years, eighty four million in purchases from the employees who have come in. If we look at just the sales tax collected on that eighty four million compared to the city's contribution, we have only from the city perspective, we have a net increase of spending sales tax revenue. And that doesn't have to do with property tax or any of the other metrics that you've measured, just that one metric.
That's a comment. Thanks. Expansion of property tax base, Mrs. Soski, is another metric, yes.
What due diligence does the EDC do on any foreign business that they are considering?
Well, we haven't had a lot of experience in that, but but we have. I mean, if you're asking the question about our conversation over the last step, I'll do this by memory also, over the last year, year and a half. We did a number of things. First of all, we checked the national security lists of prohibited companies to make sure that, you know, company isn't on that list. We would take a look at the national security office at the White House to make sure that the technology that they're using or that they're looking to deploy would not be, you know, prohibited or concerning technology relative to the federal government. We took a look at in terms of legal trade practices, we had the we had the North Dakota Trade Office to review thirty different type of databases to make sure that there are no illegal trade allegations. I guess a number of things in that regard.
Right. As an organization funded in part by the city that has bobbied on behalf of the city, local companies on major legislation involving foreign entities, also dealing with state and local officials, do you feel that the EDCs should be subject to open records requests?
You are.
You are?
Yes.
Question for you, Mr. London. I would, how many communities in North Dakota have EDCs?
It's a good, yeah, it's a good question. And I'll just name a few, obviously. It's a good, yeah, it's a good question. And I'll just name a few, obviously. The smaller the community, that typically that will be handled directly through a city or a county office, but economic development corporations are one fashion or another funded. Williston does it out of the city, Gittleson, um, Bismarck, Mandan, Minot, Doubles Lake. Jamestown, Grand Lakes. Poppetton. So a number of them. The model is pretty, pretty consistent, um, in terms of support publicly. And also through the private sector, economic development corporations. So jobs development, jobs development authorities are organized, the. Ability to support economic development through funding, that was with the legislation nineteen eight, nineteen eighty-seven was all of that. Uh, but typically that, there are some communities that staff through that, um, but most of the larger communities anywhere else say are supported by. Or the economic development function is, uh, is accomplished, I guess, directed by, by. Private but connected, uh, organization like the Grand Forks region EDC. Hope that answered your question.
Mrs. Soski.
Um, what role, if any, does the EDC play in facilitating local economics and political activities that would otherwise be handled by the city?
Um, Mrs. Solsky. If we, to answer your question this way, if you have a specific example, I can certainly address it. Um, if we were discussing legislation, federal, state, otherwise, that would have an impact on the city. That would be coordinated and discussed with city leadership. So I, I hope that answers your question. I'm not trying to debate it. I just don't know a specific example. We wouldn't. We wouldn't go and talk about something at the state and suggest they do something without first checking with those that it would impact.
All right, um, does the EDC and the city support H V fifteen oh three dealing with foreign asset ownership? And especially now that the bill includes the serious, uh, hour of hour.
There, Mrs. Soski, there are two bills related to restrictions on foreign ownership. I won't suggest that the city supports. So I let the US policymakers decide that. Uh, the EDC initially pulls that legislation because of the fact. Uh, that it had directly impacted. And if either of those pieces of legislation were to move forward, service would have had to close our doors within a year. That's four hundred and thirty jobs. And we talked about the impact of the private primary sector. That could have been, you know, eight hundred or nine hundred jobs in our committee, but it'd been devastating. They've also been in the community for a long, long time. As a result of those changes that were made before crossover and approved by the House of Representatives and the North Dakota Senate, there are no longer opposing that legislation. And our board has acted on that, so that's formal.
All right, um, do all board of director members abide by the conflict of interest policy? And how do the directors ensure that they are not personally benefiting unfairly?
Each, each director is asked to complete a conflict of interest form. And we are asked, we ask them to, to abstain from any vote in action if it does impact them directly financially.
Thank you, Mr.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Yeah, thank you for your time and attention.
Item, uh, two point two, planning and zoning briefing, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Vice President Weber. I think they're gonna be in the process of pulling up my presentation. It's a little bit shorter. Um, and I will always be available for any questions as, as well. So we'll, we'll start, I'm gonna give an overview of planning in Grand Forks. And, uh, we'll kind of hit on planning and zoning, uh, items, uh, for the most part. So, uh, if you can go to the next slide. So we have a couple of different ways that we look at how we control land use, uh, in the city. Uh, first one is our comprehensive plan. That's really made up of our land use plan. It's also made up of our long-range transportation plan. Um, there's other, uh, folks that obviously weigh in on those long-range. Transportation plans are done through the MPO, uh, and they're shared, uh, between Grand Parks and East Grand Parks as well. So there's a, a metro plan as well. In addition, we have land development code, uh, specifically we're chapter eighteen, uh, where being zoning. Uh, that includes both zoning and subdivision, uh, which is the lateral property. Next slide. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that comprehensive plan specifically of a land use plan, which was last updated in, uh, just last May. Um, and that reflects changes in the community. We look at the land use trends. Uh, I, I don't know if any, uh, of you, I think some of you were involved and actually sitting in on some of that, uh. Councilman Bean, I know you were, uh, directly involved in, um, on the committee. Uh, it, it's a guide as we move forward. Uh, we take a look at, uh, some of the requests that are made and how they fit with our vision as we move forward. And that goes out to the year twenty fifty. Uh, we look at the representation goals and values, et cetera, of the community. Uh, that we work through that, uh, process. Next slide.
I think that's updated every five years.
Correct. We've been doing that every five years. Uh, this is a, this is what that land use plan map looks like. Uh, just for frame of reference, you can see the, the airport up in the one corner. Uh, this goes four miles around the city. Our zoning, however, all of those two miles around the city. Uh, but we thought it was important to actually show it, uh, kind of that larger area. Uh, and certainly the airport, uh, kind of gives you a frame of reference where that is, uh, versus the rest of the city. And all of that is online as well. Uh, next slide. So some of the things that we look at, zoning code approvals, uh, when a new development comes in. In some cases, there's no approval needed, uh, from planning commission or city council. Uh, perhaps somebody's picking up a piece of property, it's zoned as commercial. Uh, then they will just work through staff and we could set that administrative approval. Uh, we go through, we work through other departments, engineering, uh, fire, uh, inspections. And everybody kind of comes together and weighs in on that, you know. We've been working very closely as well with public works as, as well in terms of garbage pick, stormwater, and all those requirements. In, in some cases, approvals, they do through planning commission. Um, and those can be anything from a rezoning, P U Ds, uh, conditional use of appeals. And they'll always go through planning commission, but they do, uh, make a recommendation up to the city council. So, uh, you guys are the final acting body on that. Uh, next slide. So specifically talking about some, uh, rezoning, so the requirement, uh, is that we need to get a notification in the newspaper. Ten days, uh, prior to our public hearing. Uh, and just so you guys are aware, that ten days means. We need it three weeks in advance, uh, to get it into the, into the Herald, just with their publication, uh, requirements that, uh, we have to get it in. Uh, they, they publish on Wednesdays, our meetings are on Wednesdays, so we're fourteen days in advance. And the Herald needs it one week prior. So just to understand that, uh, frame of reference of, of what's required. In addition, we go eight hundred feet around the property that used to be four hundred. That changed last spring as well. There was a request to go to a, a larger area. Just to let, uh, more people know what was, uh, going on. So specifically, rezonings go eight hundred feet. For frame of reference, typical city blocks, three hundred feet, uh, and west. So you're going out nearly three blocks around the property. Uh, so some of the things we look at, some of the concerns, things that get weighed on. Uh, we look at the adverse effect on neighborhood, whether it be traffic noise, et cetera. Uh, we look at the compatibility with land uses around it, uh, consistency with that land use plan, which we talked about. Uh, capacity of city services and then the conformance with the land development code. So all of those things are, are looked at as part of that process. And you'll kind of see some of this is also, uh, comes forward in future part of this presentation as well. Next slide. So some of our zoning districts, I won't go through each one, but A, uh, we have two districts, uh, and residential, we have six. There's everything from, uh, uh, R one, which is just single family, all the way up to multifamily, medium density, high density. Uh, and, uh, we have a, um, mobile home district as well. So, um, commercial districts, there's four. Uh, and, uh, which includes our, uh, downtown as well. Uh, industrial, we have just light and heavy industrial. And then we have a plan unit development that we see quite a bit, and that gets to be a mix of uses. And there's some give and takes and flexibilities with developers as well. Next slide. Now subdivision code, that's the next thing. And so when you guys see plaques that come through, uh, you, this is the subdivision of land. And that's where we divide a property to make it into sellable, buildable pieces. Uh, and that's got to be consistent with that comprehensive plan. And this is where, uh, we actually take a look as well. Uh, what dedication do we need in terms of right-of-way easements, uh, for public use? Uh, that includes, includes parks. So, uh, every, anytime we have a new residential development, that's, let's say, out on the edge. There's, there's no parks in that area. There's actually a park dedication committee that we go through as well. So. The new Grand Valley I'll use for an example, there's actually a set aside for a park in the center of that. So our parks department didn't have to go out and pay for that. So in this case, that developer is not only dedicating that land, but I think he's actually giving some funds. They'll bring the amenities to that as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, annexation as well. So this is, uh, another process. Um, the annexation is where we actually go out and. Uh, legally incorporate, right, an area into the city limits. Uh, as part of this review, there might be plating rezoning, uh, as well on the outside of city limits. Uh, it's conducted, and this is where I talked about, uh, we look as well as. Do we have services? So next slide, I'll, I'll get into, we have an annexation point system that we actually look at to find out. Um, is this area right for development? Uh, and so when we look at whether it should be incorporated, we actually have that point system and they're included as attachments and. Uh, those, uh, when, when we come through with the staff report, distance to water sewer, uh. Functional class streets, so not just local streets, but our functional class system that, you know, everybody shares in. Uh, in terms of the city and then flood protection as well. Uh, we look at whether the area is served with burnt fire station, um. Around that area. And then if it's residential, we look at whether it's within our park system area. So we actually have maps that show. Uh, areas around parks and make sure that there is, if it's a residential area, that can be served by parks. And then we also get points, uh, for suitability. So if it is prime farmland. It doesn't get those points, uh, which would mean it was more accessible. Because one of the goals is to keep the good farmland as good farmland. Uh, if it is not suitable and we go to the soil district map. Uh, there, there may be, uh, more right for development in that case if the soil is moved good. Um, and then we actually have city growth tiers, and then we take a look at whether it's contiguous to city limits as well. So those are all factors. Next slide. So who is the planning commission? Our planning commission made up of nine members. Um, there are six at-large members, uh, appointed by the mayor and, uh, approved by, uh, confirmed by the city council. And then, uh, there's, uh, three E T members as well. So those are, those are voted on by county commission. Uh, so those are people that live from city limit line out two miles. So there's three, uh, positions for that. That is a state requirement as well, just so you're aware. Um, and, uh, we have, that's been going on, uh, city grand force. I think we've had three for, for many years. So, uh, next slide. It, through our history, we've had some changes. So back in the nineteen seventies, for example, we had sixteen members on our planning commission. So if you thought your seven, uh, were large, we had sixteen. Um, those were six at-large, three E T. I won't go through them all. Uh, but it did include, uh, even three ex-official members that voted. Uh, mayor, city engineer, and city attorney at that time. That stayed like that until the nineteen nineties. City attorney dropped off actually through a attorney general's opinion. That said that city attorney should not be voting on planning commissions. And then, uh, all the way to twenty seventeen was our last change, uh, where we shrunk from that. At that time, I want to say fifteen members down to our current nine and one was six at large. And we removed two city council, the park board, school, which were also on the commission at that time. Next slide. Uh, so one of the questions we get asked a lot is how long, uh, before development? So, um, I've used that Grand Valley, which is the area south of Gulf Coast, down the Kingswalk area. We call Grand Valley. Uh, that area, uh, went through rezoning and plating in May of twenty twenty-two. So the question is, a lot of times, when, when are we going to start seeing houses out there? There's a lot of activity. Um, even prior to twenty twenty-two, I think we even had a lift station going in. But the hope right now, I think last week you guys approved plans and specs, uh. Uh, for the streets and other city infrastructure going in. The hope is to get the houses by this fall on there. Uh, we'll see if that's doable. So that's just the time, uh, just to get things going. Um, and that's because that lift station had already been started out there, but they, it takes a lot of time to get things going. I think originally when we talked about that lift station going out there, we were, we were talking about a four-year timeframe. When there's already a lift station, then you cut down on some of that time. And the cut down time in this case would, would be about, uh, just under two years in this case. From approval up to getting houses in front. And I believe that's my last slide. Go ahead. Yeah, questions? So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
No questions? Any questions? Mr. Please.
Um, Mr. Brooks, could you go back to the land use plan?
I can't. The actual map.
Yeah. And, and I guess what I wanted to dissect a little bit more about is the growth, you know, growth takes place, obviously for the city to grow and have to expand. In this case, either north, south, or west with, with the river there.
Yeah.
And you've shown, there's some more principles, planning principles I'm going, I'm thinking, well, I know. When we looked at this, because it went through a lengthy year-long process, including public hearings, et cetera, to adopt this, right?
Yeah, we went through, um, we went through many processes. I think we started that, the land use plan, um. Was over a year process, uh, uh, and as you said, went through public hearings, uh, went through. Uh, trying to get people to come. Uh, in some cases, we were actually successful getting pretty good turnouts. In some cases, we went out to, I think it was, uh. Potato bowl, uh, had a, had a table there to try to get some input. Um, ultimately, city Grand Forks is very confined, right? We've got the river on the one side. Um, and it's not just another city over there, it's another state, it's another county. And, uh, so we work, uh. In many ways with, with those, uh, folks over there. And anyways, the MPO is a, a good example. But in addition, city council, uh, works and has worked in the past with taking some of their centrally steward. So there's a lot of back and forth, our transit, our buses are not separate, uh, our bus system is all one. So there's a lot of things that you share, uh, and, you know, for visitors coming in, they don't know necessarily that they're crossing over or. Or care whether they're crossing over into another, maybe when they go across a bridge. So, uh, certainly we need to make those things compatible. So our downtowns are the biggest connect point. Um, the city of East Grand Forks is growing residentially to the south as well, uh, as well as the city. Um, and then, uh, we've just been concentric circles out from there, you know, in terms of, uh, growth. Uh, we've had very heavy with industrial on the north side. We have the airport, we have, uh, Simp Lots, uh, been there for many years.
So the blue is, is the airport?
Blue is airport, yeah.
Is there certain restrictions then for growth?
Yes, yes, yeah. Uh, federal, uh, regulations as well as, uh, zoning code as well.
And so I, I think as you look at that as planned, especially I'm looking even as you grow west. Um, I suppose that self-remers and, and. The light, I guess, is, is grown there. And then a lot of residential appears to be going south.
That's correct. Yeah, and it's been a difficult challenge, as you know, from, uh, many years, to get that residential to push to the west. Uh, that has been a bold, uh, because at some point we are gonna, uh. Hit the, the flood protection limits down in the south. Uh, the Grand Valley that we talked about is. Uh, in this first phase, phase of development, they'll be a half mile from, uh, the south border of the flood protection system.
And, and the locations of the elementary schools have a lot to do with growth.
Yeah, we work quite a bit with the school district as well in terms of, uh, discussions with them. Uh, ultimately, it is their decision, but they do, they do sit on and, and, uh, are made aware of some decisions, uh, being made as well. So. Um, they've been, uh, good to work with as well.
Anything further? Thank you.
Yeah, President Sandy, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, because, um, Mr. Veem brought up MPO. Um, and some of the projects, I thought I, I would ask a couple of questions related. Mr. Brooks. Wh- what, what projects are specifically run through the MPO that relate to the, the city of Grand Forks? Against the, the long-range transportation plan, I believe. Wh- what other projects are run through the MPO?
Uh, so just about all of our transportation project, I, I want to say in terms of those concept levels. Uh, once they get into more detail, I would say they turn over to our engineering department for specific orders. Because there's only, so far, you can take those federal dollars, uh, and on, uh, different corridor projects that are being done.
Sure. So then. Sure. So then the, the, all of our major transportation projects. They're funded through the MPO, through consultants, they do the studies. Then who, who then approves those projects?
Ultimately, if they're, if they involve federal dollars, they do need to get approved by the MPO at some point. Because they need to be into their transportation improvement plans. Um, I.
And, and whom, whom else?
Well, city council makes a recommendation up to, ultimately, they do need to be in the, the tip project that is an MPO. Uh, piece.
So there, there's.
City council does like that recommendation.
Both Grand, both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, correct?
Correct.
Right. So who, can you tell us, for people that don't know, can you explain to the council who the makeup of the MPO is?
Uh, I can. Uh, it is made up of a representative of planning commission from both Grand Force and East Grand Forks. Uh, it's made up of a county commissioner from Grand Forks County and Polk County, which is where East Grand Forks resides. And two city council members from both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. I think our members are, uh. Commissioner or, I'm sorry, woman Lonsky and Councilman Bean.
Great. So just purely for my edification, because I, I've never understood it. Do you have any un- understanding why? There's equal representation from Minnesota and North Dakota on our MPO when we're eighty-seven percent of the population? And, and they somehow ha- get authority to approve our transportation plans?
They, that was something that was approved uh some time ago, and I couldn't tell you who set that up. But I, I do know it was signed by both governors and to amend it. I think we have to go through that same process.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you.
Um, item two point three legislative update, uh, Mr. Phelan or Mr. Brinstrom? John? Good evening.
Sorry, coming back from my cubby, going back there. Um, legislative update. Uh, this week, uh, I've got three bills I want to focus on. Um, uh, we provided testimony and support for Senate Bill twenty-two forty, which was serving committee this morning. And twenty-two forty has the base retention grants for both, uh, for the Grand Force Air Force Base, the Minot Air Force Base. And uh, the International Garden Fargo, I believe. Now, those are the three, those, those three entities um are in that grant. Uh, heard some feedback from Representative O'Brien that uh, this impacts three committees and very important. Very important for the state, but convincing some other legislators who maybe don't have a air force facility. Uh, or a base in their uh, in their districts, uh, has, is, as Representative Brian said, has become a little more challenging than it has in years past. Uh, but she was hopeful, but that, that was her intent, that was her in committee today in the House appropriations. Um, Senate Bill twenty-three thirty, um, if, if you remember, Representative, uh, Councilmember Bean, if you remember the, the infrastructure revolving loan fund. We worked pretty hard a few sessions ago. What this is, is taking legacy fund money, putting it into a revolving loan through the Bank of North Dakota. That political subdivisions can access uh at two percent interest. Yeah, sounds really good. Well, at the time when they did that, the private market from an interest standpoint wasn't really low. Then COVID happened and ARPA money came in and they were looking at it from the, it is through the legacy fund. Um, investment bill. And they're looking, you're like, well, not many people have taken any money out of that infrastructure revolving loan fund. Let's kill it. Well, things are flipping around. Interest rates are getting higher. ARPA funds are gone. Uh, I don't mind. I have spoken up. We have spoken privately with our legislators, saying, well, no, it's a really good tool in the toolbox. Um, please leave it in there, even, even though it hasn't been used. Understand what's going on um in the financial markets or around that we were working with. Um, so this bill twenty-three thirty, we oppose it based on that, that one line and they're getting rid of the infrastructure revolving loan fund. Um, we're working with our local legislators on that. We had a good meeting on Saturday. I believe they understand that. Um, the, the feedback we got, but we, we have taken a stance of opposition to that bill because it eliminates that infrastructure revolving loan funds. That uh frankly, we, we worked pretty hard a few sessions ago to, to get into state law. And then finally, uh, speaking of funds from uh regarding uh oil revenue from the state, uh, Senate Bill twenty-three sixty-seven is a peri-dog bill. Uh, if our discussions dur- during our city priorities, we talked about peri-dog funding. And potentially, th- these are a series of buckets that, that fill with money. And then once they're full, they get distributed of moving the city bucket a little bit. Earlier in line, not increasing it, just make it earlier in line. So it's a little more guaranteed and we can start. Planning more with it. Right now it's far enough down the line. It's hard to have any plans with it. Um, not only do they have a bill that was going to move it that they killed, um, they now have a bill that increases all the buckets in front of the city buck. So uh, so we have uh taken stance of saying, hey, you know, if you're going to increase those buckets, just increase them all. We, we have been told by, by uh. Various people in Bismarck and North Dakota cities in particular, saying that they're hearing that in the hallways that they have another plan for cities to, to. Again, not so much increasing the money, just making it a little more guaranteed. So we can plan with it. We just haven't seen that mechanism yet. So we are letting our legislators know the, um, on this period of bill of, of what it does to cities. Uh, those are the three bills you're paying attention to this week. Of course, uh, transportation is still going through committees, water bills going through committees. The pension bills were heard um last week, provided testimony. They still have committee work to do on those. We're, we're tracking all those. That's going to be ongoing probably till the very end of the session. Uh, but this week, these are three in, in two of their bills. So uh, with that, I'm open to any questions or, or from our, our chair if any other comments.
Well, I just wanted to add, we did testify last week, uh, Marine Starstead, uh, Kanji Bobad and Jameson Pupac. Testified in North Dakota, Pers, um, planning, did a great job and really were the, the show. So. Get a really great job. I also attended Senate Bill twenty-twenty, which is the water, um, bill, which provides Red River, Red River Valley water supply and municipal water supply. Two programs that were used a lot, very good hearing. Uh, Mayor Dartis represented the cities of Fargo, West Fargo and Grand Forks and did a, uh, incredible job. And it's very well connected in Bismarck. So he did an incredible job and it was a really good hearing and well received. Um, in that regard. So I think the other thing that we did here uh this weekend is the, the state has to um really contemplate. Um, they're, they're underwater right now. So um, they have to look at how, um, there's lots of bills to reduce the revenue streams. And uh, there's expenses. So they're looking at it from both sides of what can they do to reduce? Um, taxes on the revenue side, whether that be property tax or income tax. But they also need to reduce um some of the expenditures. So I think when you talk about peri-dog and those sorts of things. One of the reasons why you have this SEF fund in front of the cities counties. And that SEF fund or the strategic infrastructure investment fund has about four hundred million in there. And so they're really reluctant to um put uh localities in front of that bucket because that bucket's really important to fund government. And uh, because we've only had one um session where we've actually, um, you know, gotten through all the buckets. Uh, they don't think one session, um. Is long enough for them to have the confidence of putting that, so I think not to point fingers at the state. I think uh, they said they're out for halftime, but they, it's going to get real serious now. About what they can do on the revenue side and also what they can do on the expense side. So. I, I think they'd really like to help cities and, and that's our thing, but they have, they have further issues that they need to resolve here in the next, uh, you know, several days.
And so many of the um, decisions will be based on the budget projections that are coming in this week. Um, so we'll know more by Friday.
Yeah, that is on Thursday.
Yeah, and, and probably for both John Todd, on twenty-three thirty, I'm glad to hear that, that one is, is up. I think it's being heard tomorrow at ten o'clock, if I remember.
That's right, and house financing tax.
Yeah, and, and I, we have testimony for that? And is anybody able to deliver any testimony?
Uh, we have testified, uh, we'd probably likely be virtual for us to do that. We have talked to the Bank of North Dakota, uh, specifically when we were down in Bismarck, uh, for Grand Forks days. And spoke with the Bank of North Dakota. The Bank of North Dakota is looking at a different conduit. Uh, to provide those low interest, long on-term funding streams that includes the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And so even if that uh bill fails, we're looking at a separate appropriation to the Bank of North Dakota that would uh provide that.
Well, I'm, I'm going to be a feature choir when I talk to you, but the impact of that alone on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is two hundred million dollars. So it, you know, it sounds like this is a simple thing, you know, long-term, low-interest loan, but it's, it's the local funding for the whole Red River proper. Uh, project. So um, it's urgent whether we get it through that or if it's a special fund. And I understand they need um, uh, legislation, uh, the Bank of North Dakota will. So we have to have legislation one way or another. And if we don't get it from here, uh, and you know, we do have a big. Dollar amount because it's due by any, we have to have money per match. And so, I mean, as much as it was great to give the money for, you know, for main project, this is equally as important for us.
Yes, and they would, uh, in what Councilmember Bean is talking about, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five pressure that there's legislative intent. And I think right now the state's put in upwards of nine hundred and fifty-three million uh as part of their seventy-five percent. But our twenty-five percent, uh, the first tranche that uh we easily approved was under that Bank of North Dakota forty-year term, two percent interest. Uh, so we want to make sure our twenty-five percent carries through the project. Um, over the next um ten years so that we continue to get that. So we made everyone well where that, that's a, it's a deal breaker if we have to suddenly go. Um, from two percent over forty years to, you know, five, six percent. Um, as we.
And equally, I hope in twenty twenty, we get that funding request up from what the Senate side did to the House side. Because that adds, that goes from a six-year project to a ten-year project and adds fifty-plus million dollars just in construction escalation. Uh, per Viennium, uh, all of that's adding cost to us.
Yes, but see at the hearing, they, you know, they're very receptive, understood and they, they, like Mr. Weber, you said. They're waiting on that budget forecast that impacts, impacts several funds across the board at the state. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, John. Uh, in three point one, standstill agreement relating to Foo Fun USA Development. So go ahead.
All right, members of the committee, um. In my staff reports that was provided, um, after the, you took action to uh pursue the term, termination of the development agreement. I was contacted by Foo Pan's attorney, um, wanting to have discussions about implementing and affecting uh the termination. Um, under the development agreements, um. The, the next action that would have been taken would have been to send out the notice of termination. Um, and then followed up with making the ban on the letter of credit. Um, we, uh, Foo Pan's attorney requested that, uh, we have discussions about the implementation and, and. Um, affecting that termination of the development itself. Uh, that seemed appropriate, uh, to have those discussions. Um, and they wanted to have, it's described as a standstill agreement. Basically, uh, everything just stays on hold. We say everything, we don't send out termination notice at this point to allow for those discussions to occur. Um, it doesn't affect any of the rights with respect to the city as far as the, the termination is concerned. Uh, it just allows for the parties to have, to sit down and have these discussions. Uh, one of the items that, that I brought to the attention of the attorney was, we've got the letter of credit that's sitting out there. Uh, that automatically renews uh every year on an annual basis. The renewal date is June twenty-fourth this year. Um, they can send out, the bank can send out a non-renewal notice that has to be sent out sixty days in advance. And one of the requirements that I, I presented to the attorney, Foo Fan, was we need to make sure that that letter of credit stays in place. I'm not anticipating the discussions to last this long, but things can happen. Um, and I was told that the bank could agree to maintain that letter of credit to allow for those discussions to occur. So essentially what we're asking is this, um, tenter into the standstill agreement. That doesn't affect the, 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 the rights of the city. Uh. If at the end of the day, we can't, there isn't an agreement reached with respect to the implementation. And the standstill agreement goes away and we move forward with the termination to send out the termination notice. So it's essentially just allowing us to have these discussions. So I just want uh authority to. Uh, start drafting that agreement. I've asked the Poopan attorney to uh, to draft the agreement. I haven't gotten that draft back yet, but. Um, just to get that authorization to allow uh the city to enter into that agreement to allow for these discussions to occur. So we weren't happy to answer any questions regarding, regarding the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Gasta. Any questions or, uh, Mrs. Suss?
I guess I just don't really understand what type of agreement we're trying to reach. I mean, I understand that there. Different legal situations that we have to go through, but I, I really thought that the development agreement was clear and to the point. And that, you know. If something went wrong, we could terminate that. And now we are being asked to approve this standstill agreement. Um, how long you participate or how long do you think that we're going to stand still for? Um. I guess I just don't understand what we're trying to come to an agreement. My. Foo Fang was deemed a national security threat, so we terminate the agreement, we get our money back. I. I don't understand. Are there issues that we're not being tooled about?
There's, um, the, the discussions could involve more than just the termination, more than simply getting the money back. We, they, they still own the property. Those discussions could occur with respect to what are we going to do with the development? Is there somebody else that might want to come in and, and uh acquire the property for the development? There's all kinds of things that could be placed on the table. That seems like an opportunity for the city to, to have those discussions.
All right. Um, do you feel that maybe? As a city, we should get a third party attorney to ensure that we are properly represented?
Um, I think I can represent the city adequately, uh, with respect to the issues. Uh, I haven't had any direction from the mayor or anybody else to, to suggest that, uh, they need a third party to, to have these discussions.
All right. I think those are the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Gasta.
Thank you. Is the development agreement transferable?
It could be. Uh, I think there is an assignment provision. I don't have it committed to memory, uh, Councilmember Bean. But I, I believe if the city uh agreed to the assignment, it could be assignable it under those set of circumstances.
And if it were. The existing agreement would remain in that. As far as the individual items in there, whatever.
It, it could, or it could be modified depending on who might want to take the assignment. There may be some provisions that may not be applicable, um, to whoever might be the asset of, of the agreement. There may be things that, that need to be added because of the, the set of circumstances. So it could be assigned, uh. With modifications are to be signed.
But we'll have to agree to the modification.
It would, it would be, it would be the city council would have to approve any type of modification. Yes.
Okay. The other question is on the, um. Letter of credit, this, I may be a little bit confused that the bank has the authority to look at when the notice of non-renewal. Am I, I may be a little bit confused on asking that.
Yes.
How's that play into this?
Yes, yeah, yeah. There is a, the letter of credit was an automatic renewal. Um, subject however to the bank, um. Sending out a non-renewal notice. And if you recall, we entered into an amendment to the development agreement to account for that set of circumstances. That if the bank did send out that non-renewal and Foo Pan either had to get an equivalent letter of credit. Where they had to deposit the five million dollars. Uh, and so we anticipated the, the potential for non-renewals. If we're going to get into the standstill, then we have the discussions and I'm not anticipating it to go into June, but. Things can happen, right? Um, that the bank has agreed not to uh send out that non-renewal notice and the letter of credit will remain in place.
A day's for another year or whatever.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cole, so the, the letter of credit extension, is that something that we, we have the intent, but we don't have that on file yet?
We don't, I don't have, I've, I've got an email from their attorney telling me that the bank has, has agreed to not send out the non-renewal. And again, the letter of credit remained in place while this kind of the standstill period would, would uh play itself out.
And is that legally binding? Just.
We'd have the, no, we'd have the, the bank, it's going to have to endorse onto this uh standstill agreement as well.
And then assuming we can enter the standstill agreement, under no way could we reengage Foo Fang. Without our approval or that's not even a possibility right now.
Anything that might develop from this, these discussions would come back to the city council for approval. If at the end of the day, the discussions aren't fruitful and we, we don't, the parties just can't reach any type of agreement. Then the standstill agreement goes away and we start operating and we, we engage the determination. Like we go back in time to, to where we are today.
And at that point, we could draw on letters of credit as the contractor, as the development.
Correct. If, if the discussions aren't fruitful, the notice termination goes out and, and we start the, the procedures to make the ban on the letter of credit.
Thank you.
Maybe you can answer this, but what's the benefit to us to go into the negotiation?
Um, the, the benefit is there might be some discussions about who might be able to develop this property. Um, the, the benefit is there might be some discussions about who might be able to develop this property. Um, they still own the, the, the three hundred acres. We could have those discussions. I think everything is on the table with respect to the future development of this property. And as you pointed out, possibility of assignment to the agreement, there's just all kinds of things that, that could be discussed. Um, and I'm, I'm not trying to foreclose any possibility.
Cause I would expect. You know, the money that we pay to the consultants and stuff is, is an expense that's sitting out there, right? Where does the food funds come for all of those payments to, so far?
That I don't know. The financier, I can maybe answer that better than I can.
On the de-annexation, I, I can go for that.
Okay.
Good. President Sandy? Nope.
Looking for, uh. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it. I'm, I'm not excited about it. Um. I want it, I want this done yesterday, um, and just be done with it, move on. Um, but I think one concern that we did here early on was, uh, of them owning the land. So if there's a possibility that. I don't even know if I should throw this out there, but if we, as a city acquire the land or another company acquires a land or, uh, somebody else completely acquires the land, if we can. Um, in some way have those conversations, I do think it would be a positive thing. So with that all.
You have a motion from Mr. Weigle. Second from President Sandy. Any further questions or comments?
I have a question. Is it possible to separate the terms of agreement and the post-termination of the agreement?
Do, do what?
Um, is it possible to separate the terms of the agreement and the post-termination of the agreement?
Separate the terms of the agreement and the, I'm not following what your question is. I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding your question.
Um, that's all right.
Okay. If you have, if you have, but I feel like follow-up in the effort that we want to have a answer.
This is, this is a recommendation. This comes back to council. This is final.
It's final approval to, to, it's just for purposes of the standstill. Nothing in, and to allow for the discussions to occur. If there happens to be some sort of agreement that would happen to come from those discussions. That would certainly come back to the city council.
This is an action item. In fact, do I need to open a public hearing on this?
No.
But it is an action item tonight.
So.
If we don't approve this, then what happens?
Uh, then I'll tell Foo Fong that, uh, we're not interested in any type of standstill and we proceed forward with, uh, sending out the termination notice and.
And we get our money back?
And we make demand on the letter of credit.
I think, Mr. Weber?
Please, President, please.
I think the, uh, the benefit of the standstill agreement gives our city attorney the opportunity to negotiate without having to be in court. And I think the opportunity to negotiate without going to court has the likelihood of saving our community a considerable amount of money. Because we're talking about going to court with a multi-billion dollar company that probably isn't super happy with. Our community right now. So I would, I would prefer that. Our city attorney have the opportunity to go and have some friendly discussions with them. Rather than go into an unfriendly situation. I think it, it would definitely be in our best interest and. We lose nothing if he goes and isn't able to come to an agreement, then we terminate. But that's just my, my opinion.
Right. So how long did you say we have? Like, once we approve this? Then how much time does that give you before? Things are decided upon? I mean, there has to be a timeframe.
Yeah.
And, and that's. Kind of what I would like to.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't, I don't think there is a specific time period, right? I mean, the people, the parties are going to be able to, to. Have these discussions and, and if they're so far apart that there's, there's. You're going to recognize it, right?
Right.
I've been at a number of mediations where the parties look at each other, want to come and, and have discussions and, and truly want to reach an agreement, but they simply can't. And both parties recognize they have to walk away from the table. That happens all the time.
Right.
Um, so I'm not, I, I don't want to say it's got to be done in forty-five days, like sixty days. If the discussions just aren't bearing any fruit and we're not having, uh, it, it doesn't look like where the parties are. This far apart, there's no way to reconcile it, then we recognize that and we walk away.
Okay. Do you think we should put a timeframe on that?
You could.
I mean, what would you think would be a fair timeframe?
I think anywhere from a sixty to ninety-day period to fully explore. Now, that's, that's at the outer end of, of the universe, it seems to me. Um, we're going to know, I think, in fairly short period of time whether, if there's, if there's any, uh, fruit to be, uh, at game here from these discussions.
Right. Um, I guess then I understand that Danny's motion's on the table, but I can motion to add in. The timeframe part, correct?
I agree. I just amend my motion.
We'd be looking for ninety days, be sure.
I, I think so. I, I just don't want this dragging out for six months and being like, oh.
I, I would amend my motion for ninety days and then, uh, I'm, I'm assuming you'll be bringing up dates prior to that anyways.
Representative Kabami made the second, which you. Oh, it's Dana, right, President Sandy.
And certainly then happy to accept that friendly amendment. Certainly.
Mr. V.
I'm going to make a request, not to change the motion. I think, you know, I'm glad that you're having the discussions. But I think at some point, we as the council would probably like to have input in that process that we have to go into executive session for that purpose. It would seem like we would have that opportunity to make sure our issues are being incorporated into your discussion.
I think that's most appropriate, Councilmember, being once, if we get to the spot where it, it does necessitate input or, or, uh, from the council member, I think that's most appropriate.
Um, hearing no further questions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, if I may?
President Sandy, please.
Um, to Mr. Veen's point, is there a reason we have to bring that to a council meeting?
Uh, we, we, that was an action item. We have now given that approval.
No, I, I understand, but. If Mr. Veen wants to bring this back to a council meeting so that the council can provide their input of their thoughts to the city attorney of what they might want to do. Why wouldn't Mr. Veen or any of the rest of us just send an email to the city attorney suggesting input in the discussion? I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have that. I just believe that we should have open comm- communication with our city attorney at all times.
President Sandy, I think I understood it as in once Mr. Gustin has information. To bring it back. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Veen? Yeah. Once that information, that conversation's not prior.
Very good. Then that makes perfect sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Sandy. Um, item three-point-two, de-annexation petition update and set date for city council consideration. Uh, Mr. Peeling.
I, I'm going to, uh, give a brief overview of the PowerPoint presentation we provided to you, uh, back in February. The motion we will ask, uh, at the end here, I'm going to go over some of these PowerPoint slides. Mr. Gustin's going to go over those, uh, those several bullets of the de-annexation and I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Brooks from Plank come up here and show me that D and X, the annexation map that we have. We are going to ask you to set the date, set the hearing date of Monday, April third, which would be a city council date. So that would be the motion that we're asking, um, for. Okay, next slide. Cheryl, thank you. Um, next slide. Um, again, this is the annexation area that, that we're going to, we're going to specifically speak of and Mr. Brooks will have a new map. And then the next map is, um. Next, next map. So the next map is, you've seen this before. The green areas are, the areas already in the city of Grand Forks, can see to the right. Is that, uh, Mill Road, uh, eighty-one area? And then, and then it moves along twenty-seventh Avenue North and then in the Oscarville areas to the area to the left. The yellow area is the McCorrenta area. So that's under an annexation agreement. So when the Correnta is no longer on that land, it will be, uh, hopefully become annexed into the city. And then you can see in, in, uh, red are those that, um, uh, asked the city council not to move forward with the annexation. As we import, we'll have an updated map that will show, um, with the petition itself. Next slide. On, on this map, these are the areas that were specific to Foo Fong and as I noted before. And the only areas that we're really working on right now regarding this, you know, are the, those C O T. Uh, improvements are that are mainly turn lanes. Um, on Highway two and eighty-one are the ones that we're working on, along with the wastewater treatment plant, um, that would serve this area and all. Across the city of Grand Forks, next map. Next slide. Um, when we get up to the, the, we have several items tonight. And so not only when we get to items four, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, um, you're going to see some folks that are going to come up there. In a similar vein, I'm going to ask, um, that recommend that you move all of those, all four forward with, and some are not asking you to move forward. With the bits themselves, but to move them forward to the April third because this map. Is important in that respect of we're going to move forward with, uh, various infrastructure components, mainly water, wastewater. And so that, uh, if we do continue with the annexation, obviously we need, we're going to put in infrastructure, but if we don't intend to move forward with the annexation. Um, there would be no sense to put some of this infrastructure in. So we're going to move, um, all the award dates to that same date, um, but we'll go over those individually. I just want to point out, if you look at twenty-seventh Avenue North, which is to the south. Um, we're going to talk about the water main that's going to serve basically from twenty-seventh Avenue North, the thirtieth. That's under phase one. Phase two is from thirtieth Avenue North to thirty-third. And then phase three would be thirty-third Avenue North and north. So that's another three areas in a similar vein. The sanitary sewer is going to follow the water. Uh, as we move from south, south to north. We're also going to talk about that green guy, which is a domestic sanitary sewer, um, pump station. That's going to be discussed as one of those four items too. So we'll go over those in, in more in detail. I really want to emphasize the water part of this because the, the water really impacts. Uh, what we're doing from a fire protection and a domestic service. So I'm going to ask, uh, Christian Danielson to come up here when we get to that item. I'm going to ask Chief Lorenz to come up and also Dan Hanson from Waterworks. So you can fully understand what that, um, water main will, will mean to us. We'll do a similar vein with the, uh, with the wastewater collection enforcement system too. Next slide. Again, um, we have some city-specific. We've talked about that mainly. I would probably center on the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we'll continue to hard work on that and you'll, you'll get more updates on that in the near future. The areas that we're really going to focus on are these Highway eighty-one annexation area, uh, dedications and, and that was the ones that went over on the map. And then I talked about the Foo Fong USA dedicated one. So next slide. This is the wastewater treatment plant. You'll, you'll hear more about that where we continue to work in that. So next slide. Um, again, these are citywide things that we're working on that we already presented to you. So next slide. And, and these are the phase one that we're, what I want to point out on this one. So, um, also, Mary Vee, so you talked about, you know. What, what are, what's part of the letter of, um, the letter of, um, credit and what's part of the special assessment? So I just want to point out on this map. The stormwater pond, you can see along there is, is, is part of a special assessment. The sanitary sewer expansion is also part of this, uh, special assessment. All the rest are really related to rates, um, or grants. And so, uh, under the next slide. You can see where with Foo Fong USA dedicated, um, areas, you can see. Under the portion of the stormwater pond, you can see that a hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred for engineering and then the one million seventy thousand nine hundred. That is, that is going to be special assessed to the Foo Fong property, that greenfield development. Also, which will be, uh, assessed to them is their portion of the sanitary sewer. And to date, we've just done design, that's that forty-eight thousand, uh, two hundred dollars. So that's going to be under special assessment. All the other numbers are, are related to the letter of credit itself. And so, so if you take that, uh, those two special assessment categories, that's one point, one million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and two hundred dollars. One million, one point two eight million dollars is going to be special assessed. That will not appear as part of the, um, letter of credit. Uh, next slide. So when you look at all of those items, we're right now and, and this, I suspect the, the number is higher today than it was when we presented it as back in, in. In February, just because a lot of the, um, agreements with consulting, we lag a month in billing. And so we will have some additional billings that will go add on to this. But if you take the three, almost the three-point-four million, you have to, um, subtract the one point two eight million, um, dollars as part of that. Of what would it be attributed to the layer of credit? And so when you do that math, we're a little over two point one million dollars. That relate to that five million. A layer of credit is where we're at. Uh, next slide. And on this side, I'm going to ask Dan to go over these bullets. I know there's been a lot of questions on what this means. And then once Dan gets done, I'm going to ask Mr. Brooks to come up here and, and show you that now.
Mr. Gustin, please.
Many members, um, a petition came in, I think there were five packets of petitions for the annexation came in on last month. Last month, maybe the month before, yeah. And then there was a. Additional packet that came in last Friday, I think was supposed to be part. So we've got six packets of petitions, um. As I understand, there's forty-two parcels that are listed on each packet. They're identical except to. Um, with the signatures are on the, on the document. Uh, I think we've talked about this before, but with the de-annexation, um, the, the petition has to be signed by, uh, not less than three-fourths of the qualified electors. Uh, also owners of not less than three-fourths of the assessed value of the property that's subject to the de-annexation petition. The statute for the petition doesn't apply if the lands are planted. Under the statutes that are referenced there. It also doesn't apply if there are municipal, uh, improvements that have been made or constructed, um, either in the area that's stuck to be, uh, D N X or adjacent to it. Um, and so that's the review process that's occurring right now is to evaluate the, the, the three-force criteria. Um, take a look at, you know, the areas that are being asked to be, um, de-annexed and they've been planted. What, if any municipal improvements exist out there? And then, uh. The, the, um. There has to be a determination date, final termination date for the city council to take action. That's a, a third date. Um, I'd expect that the staff would have information to the councils on all of these issues. Uh, so that the council can take, uh, final action with respect to the petition. A couple of procedural items, the, their, the petitioners have to publish notice, uh, of this hearing. And then the, uh, the city also has to send out, uh, mailings, I believe it's certified mailing to all the parties, owners within the, uh. The annexation area of the April third hearing date. Uh, and so today, we, really what you'd be doing is the action item, you know, I still thought thunder, but the action item is really just a set date for April third. So that we can start that procedural process. And then, uh, at the April third date, have all this information so you could make a decision. Uh, at that time. And, and again, the decision is discretionary. So even if you meet all the criteria, it's still a discretionary decision by, by the city council.
Simple majority?
Yes.
I, I've also, uh, we, while we pull up the map, I sure I'll have Brian come up here. I've attached two additional ones that we, we've had on, uh, for a few meetings. One is, uh, our former city assessor, Paul Odeck, provided, um, property tax information. So I've attached that and I. There's also going to be a board of equalization that will occur on April third and that's typically the meeting when you take all the various protests. And then you set a meeting date in the future. So I suspect some of these property owners may be there, but I want to provide that in advance. Obviously what we found along Highway eighty-one is the values that we have, uh, provided, uh, are much, um, much greater than, uh, what there currently be assessed as. So that's going to be an important document for you to review. The other document is, um, the special assessments and what we agreed to do as part of the infrastructure, remember on the water. The other part, the important part of determining what to do is we, we do have application in on the water main. Under all three phases to have a sixty percent cost share from the, uh, North Department of Water Resources. So. Um, we intend in the next month or so to get that finalized and, um, sixty percent of that construction to be paid for by the state or quota. Forty percent would, would been, would then also be covered by the city of Grand Forks. We would not assess that. The sanitary sewer, uh, system, including the pump station is all a city cost that was not going to be assessed, uh, any of it to the adjacent Highway eighty-one area. Except for the, uh, Foo Fong property, the sanitary sewer collection was going to be, uh, special assessed. And I think what I heard, the number, the round number is about thirty percent of that cost for the sanitary sewer collection system would be assigned to that greenfield development at Foo Fong. And then finally the stormwater pond, you, you did agree as the, the Foo Fong property, now before fifty percent of that stormwater pond. Uh, would be assessed too, but I've attached those and we'll update those as we. Would be assessed too, but I've attached those and we'll update those as we, as we're getting beds now so that you have updated numbers. And that Christian Danielson's working on, but I just wanted to highlight those as part of this annexation and the infrastructure development.
Mr. V.
If we terminate the agreement that we have within the agreement that they're going to pay the sanitary sewer charge, what does that? Continue to, do they need to still pay that even though we terminate the agreement?
Yes, a lot of Mr. Boss had answered that.
And those, that would be the subject of the special assessment, right? Yeah, if it's specially assessed, it's specially assessed. So whether they own it or we terminate the agreement or not. As a part of this, they will pay their part of that special assessment.
I believe the special assessment district has already been created. And so they're, they're part of the special assessment district.
Yeah, because some are, some won't pay and others are paying the entire cost. And so whether they're in the agreement or not, that formula stands. The, the, the special assessment district has been formulated already and they believe. Once the construction bids come in, then we start the special assessment process. And start imposing weight on, on property owners.
Just come over things on the annexation. Currently, we are maintaining from a public works perspective. So if you look at Highway eighty one going always. Through the diversion ditch, we're maintaining that. We're maintaining twenty seventh Avenue North, which is in the annexation area so that if we are going to de-annex. We will no longer maintain those. I did ask Public Works, we've been, we've been doing Highway eighty one since twenty ten on the diversion ditch. Just because we go above and beyond, but just so you know, we would no longer do that. The other thing is that we're, we're providing, you know. Police fire, all those kinds of protections in this area. And Gary will talk about what we're doing in the interim. I'll get this far. So with that, I ask this to work to over this.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for Cheryl finding. I, I just finished this right before this meeting. So the map that you see here is. North Washington. If I can stand in front of the, the map, maybe here's North Washington here, twenty seventh avenue is here. What you see in yellow and in gray is actually city limits today. The yellow was existing as of last year. Prior to the annexation of the Highway eighty one area, the gray, it was all included. The red area is actually the area that we received the debt, the annexation request. You can see it's a, it's not, it's not as contiguous. It's, there's a little bit of a. Two different areas there. Within that as well, there's six parcels that did not sign of the, of the forty two. And so those are highlighted, those are hashed in blue there. So those are the areas that we found that were not included. And then I, I just for reference as well, we've talked about it before, but. The grid area down there at the bottom in yellow, at the very bottom, that's the current annexation area. So. What we've told the current, they're under an annexation agreement. As soon as they're platted and started to develop, then we would annex each of those parcels as they came in. So anytime there's a plating there, we would go through that annexation just for reference. So. With that, it's kind of a big map and I can certainly try to answer anything for anyone or try to give you some landmarks if you need to on the map.
Any questions from Mr. Brooks?
No, but I do have a question. So if we go. We're going to push this to April third and then these for the bid awards. Will those all get moved to April third also? So we don't even have to talk about them tonight?
We'll, we'll go over the way to stress the importance of them. So we understand leading into the discussion on the D N X A, the annexation. You'll understand what our recommendation and where I will recommend that. But no, the only thing we're asking for is to move those awards, move them forward, but move them forward to the April third date.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King.
Looking for a motion. So. Have a motion from second from Mrs. Solsky. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes. Discussion items, item four point one, application from Kaizen LLC. DBA Kaizen sushi and ramen for a class three on off sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage license. Have I pronounced that correctly?
Yes, I believe so. Chair Weber, members of the committee, I have an application from Kaizen LLC to take over the business previously run as Shing Law, Shing. Yeah, Shing Law in the block just behind us here. They've had a Japanese restaurant there for a number of years with beer wine licenses. The previous owner has decided he wants to move closer to family, which is a little, a little bit warmer climate than us. And he has found a buyer for his restaurant. That buyer currently does all, already operate similar restaurants in Vemichi looking to expand. It's been reviewed by departments, no issues from anyone. So.
Thanks. Promotion from Mr. Kavon, second from Mrs. Solsky. Any further questions? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Four point two, twenty twenty two K for the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Good evening.
Evening. I come before you about this time every year with this report. It's an annual report that's due to head on April first regarding the city's C D B G program. There's no action requested of council other than just hold a public hearing at next Monday's meeting so that we can receive any input and record that along with the. Annual report. There is a, a link on your staff report to a draft and last year's report is available on the website. It's same, same page.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Solsky. We don't need a motion at this time. This is information on. Item four point three, award bid number two zero two three dash two aerial mosquito and twenty twenty three dash three mosquito control chemicals and equipment.
Good evening, Chairman and members of council. It's that time of year again, so we're up here to recommend your approval of the bids that are identified in the packet that you have. And we're not purchasing any new equipment and so very similar to last year.
A move approval. Good job, Mr. Hanson.
Second from Mr. V. Any questions or comments? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four point four, bid award for project number eight three five nine, urban traffic signal rehab.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So this is the project that's been for you guys several times already. It's a signal rehab project that's going to address twelve signalized intersections in town here utilizing about three point one million dollars of federal funding. Through the urban roads program. We recently opened bids for this project, March third. We've got two bidders on the project. Both are qualified contractors to work in the, in the city. The low bid was from Parsons Electric in the amount of about three point three million dollars. Our engineer's estimate was about three point five million dollars. So low bid came in about five percent underneath the engineer's estimate. The funding split on this project is about eighty twenty, federal, city. The city share is projected to be a little bit over the budgeted amount. We currently have nine hundred and seventy five thousand budgeted in the street infrastructure fund. So we're a little bit over that and we'll need a budget amendment, but we are recommending an award of the contract to the low bidder, Parsons Electric. In the amount of three million, three hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and ninety four dollars and eighty cents, along with any necessary budget amendments.
Motion from Mr. Wyman. Second, second from Mr. Tommy, questions or comments? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, she passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four point five, bid award for project number eight five seven two, district number seven seven zero. Paving eleventh avenue south from fifty eight and six hundred and fifty feet east of that.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So this is a paving and streetlights project. It is currently a gravel section out there right now. This is just self lava treatment plant. So this project is looking to convert the gravel section to a paved section with curb and gutter. We would do a little bit of grading as well, just to tie in the ditches and it does include some minor modifications to the existing storm sewer. All of the other utilities are already in place out there. This is a local street, so it would be special assessed a hundred percent per city policy. We opened bids last week. We got two little, or two bids on this project. The low bid was from op construction at about four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Our engineer's estimate was four hundred and forty six, so we were about four percent underneath that. Op construction does a lot of work for the city. They do a handful of projects every year, so they're more than qualified to do this work. And we are recommending award of the contract to op construction in the amount of four hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and sixty four dollars.
Unless there are questions, we have a motion from Zlonski, second from Mr. Weigle. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four point six, bid award for project number eight five six eight, district number seven six eight. Reconstruct South Fourteenth Street and Fourteenth Avenue South.
Good evening, Chairman Weber. This evening, the next five staff reports I have, I'll be bringing forward are all bid awards. And such, this first one is for our proposed project to reconstruct four and a half blocks of South Fourteenth Street and Fourteenth Avenue. This is immediately west of Washington Street, you may recall. Bids were opened last week Thursday, we received two bids. The low bid was submitted by Stratocorporation. It was about one point three percent above engineers estimates. Concrete came in a little pricier than we expected this year. But that's still very close to engineers estimate. So with that, we are recommending award to Stratocorporation in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy, seventy two cents. And approve any necessary budget amendments for this project.
Have a motion for President Sandy. Second from Miss Linsky, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Both same sign, motion passes. Item four point seven, bid award for project number eight six one zero dash eight six one one dash eight six one two, twenty twenty three sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer repairs.
Thank you again. This is our annual contract to, for emergency repairs of water mains, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, et cetera. And it also accomplishes some routine works and routine small repair jobs around the city. We opened bids last week Thursday, we had two bidders. The low bid was three hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars submitted by Tayer Contracting. This was approximately two percent beneath the engineer's estimates. So we're very happy with those bids. With that, we recommend award to the little bidder, Tayer Contracting, in the amount stated.
Motion from Mr. Tommy, second from President Sandy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Lieberman, four point eight, bid award for project number eight six one four dash six one five, twenty twenty three city sidewalks and ADA ramps.
Thank you once more. This is our annual contract to reconstruct sidewalks and ADA ramps around the city. It also installs new sidewalks and ADA ramps in new areas of development. We opened bids this past Thursday, we received two bids. The low bid was submitted by United Crane and Excavation. It was about seven point seven percent above engineers estimates. Smaller contracts like this, sometimes it's tricky to dial in exactly. What factors might be contributing, but we think because this contract involves many smaller jobs around town. That mobilization cost, we think is what's possibly be a little bit more expensive than estimated. So with that, we are recommending award to United Crane and Excavation in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars. And approve any necessary budget amendments for these projects.
Motion from Mr. V, second from Mrs. Solsky, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item four point nine, bid award for project number eight six six four, twenty twenty three inlet protection services.
Thank you. This contract is currently out for bid. It was previously approved by city council for plans and specifications. And we expect to have a bid opening this week Thursday. So with council's approval, we would like to bring the low bid recommendation to city council next Monday.
We have motion from Mr. Weigle. Second from Mrs. Solsky, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item four point one zero, bid award for project number eight six four one, reconstruct South Washington. S E D to fifty seventh Avenue South. C D.
South End Drainway.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you once more. This is similar to the last staff report. This is currently out for bid. Due to the timing and we'd like to get this large construction contract started as soon as bids are received. We are requesting to bring the low bid to city council next week, Monday.
Very good. But you still need a motion on, on that or? Motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Mr. Tommy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion passes. And item four point one one, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Mr. Phelan, bid award, project number eight six four three, bus maintenance facility expansion phase two.
Yes, thank you, Council, Vice President Weber. We know Dale Berger can't be with us this evening, so you have me. This is really another important project and we should be very proud of all the great things we do at Public Transit. Who all the really grant funding that we received on behalf of Dale Berger's leadership. So we received a seven point seven million dollar F P A capital grant to do phase two of our improvements at our, our public transit facility. And so that's essentially our further renewal of the facility and also expansion now in the office and dispatcher, but also in the. Places where we do vehicle storage and stuff and also some upgrades as part of the facility. So. If I could, I dropped off a, a bit tab. If I could explain this to you, and this is what I'm likely to approve this evening. This is a, with this F P A capital grant, it is a ninety ten, so it's ninety percent federal president administration funds, ninety percent local. So it's even better than our normal eighty twenty split. So another positive. So what I'm asking for this evening is under the general construction that we award, general construction to Innis Construction. In the amount of four million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred dollars. It would include all the alternatives except for alternative six. So in all these bids, we do not want to move forward with alternative six, which is the rainwater harvesting. It was, it was much over our expectations. We're not asking to award that present. Under mechanical construction, we're asking you to award it to sunset plumbing and heating in the dollar amount of seven hundred and seventy five thousand. Under the electrical construction, we're asking you to approve the burps from electric bid in the amount of five hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars. Under the fuel storage and dispensing equipment, we're asking you to award the bid to Innis Construction in the amount of three hundred and ninety eight thousand. We did not receive any bids on the wash bay. We anticipate, we're going to go plan to rebid that. We anticipate the budget for that will be in around three hundred and fifty thousand. With that, the, the total bid will be six million, five hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars. I mean, in addition to that, we're at, we're going to setting aside soft costs, which are, you know, professional fees on fixtures, inspections, testing. In the amount of six hundred and sixty four thousand, three hundred and twenty eight dollars. We've, we're setting aside five percent for construction contingency in the amount of three hundred and twenty five thousand, one ninety eight. And then again, I mentioned the wash bay capital set aside of three hundred and fifty thousand. So in total, the total current set aside bid is seven million, eight hundred and forty three dollars, forty three thousand, eight, four hundred and eighty three dollars. Of which that capital grant will pay for seven million, fifty nine thousand, one hundred and thirty four dollars. And the local match will be seven hundred and eighty four thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars. So that's what we're asking you to approve in any appropriate budget amendments as part of this project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We have a, Mr. V, please.
The only question I have, because of just the way getting is today, the five percent contingencies seems to be like. You guys feel comfortable with that?
We do. We're, we're setting that aside for five percent at this point. We still do have, since we're only, you know, we're just over seven million in the federal branch. We still have, you know, about seven hundred thousand plus on that federal grant, of which every time we spend adult or we have to match a ten percent. So we feel pretty good if we have to come back and ask.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
A motion from Mr. V and second from Mr. Tommy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item four point one two, bid award for project number eight five seven five, district number five nine four, water main for Highway eighty one and associated area.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So this item kind of tails on the back end of the de-annexation discussion that Todd just kind of went over here. This one pertains to the water distribution, distribution in the area. This is that first phase of water main that's intended to bring water service and fire protection to that entire area. Cheryl, if you can scroll through the, the staff report there, you can see the phase map. This is the phase that's primarily focused around twenty seventh Avenue North. It's intended to put a sixteen inch water main down the center of twenty seventh avenue with some small. It's intended to put a sixteen inch water main down the center of Twenty-seventh Avenue with some smaller diameter pipe branching off of that to serve some of the areas primarily just south of Twenty-seventh Avenue and then a little bit north to get us up to about the Thirty-Fifth Avenue North area. So sixteen inch pipe is pretty standard for us to install on a section line corridor, which Twenty-seventh Avenue is. Um, in the staff report, there's also a map that shows the city's intended build-out plan when it comes to water main. You'll notice in that map that there's kind of a grid-like structure that you can notice on the, the edges of town, that's that sixteen inch water main that falls on those section lines, so. This whole um, build-out right here that you can see, it's following the planned build-out pretty closely that we have set up for the city here. So the main intent of this project is to provide fire protection and water service to the area and um, Dan Hanson and Chief Lorenz are gonna come up and give a little bit of discussion as far as how those um, different aspects kind of benefit the maintenance and the fire protection side, but right now, we do have developments out there that are either existing or greenfield that are looking to us to bring some of these utilities out there because their developments do not continue without the water service or the city water service being there. So there is, um, there is properties out there that are looking for this water protection or water and fire protection. Um, ultimately tonight, like Todd mentioned, we're looking to award business contract, but haven't pushed to that April third um, council meeting, so we have open bids on this project, we received three of them. Uh, the lowest bid came from Tiger Contracting in the amount of one million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. This was like twelve thousand dollars underneath engineers estimates, we were within one percent, it was just a little bit underneath engineers estimate. And as far as holding this to the April third council date, we do have sixty days from opening the bid, which is on May second, so we are within that um, designated timeframe, so ultimately, we're looking to award the contract to Tiger in that amount, but on April third, pending the discussion on the de-annexation. And then I will turn it over to Dan Hanson and Chief Lorenz to just give a little bit more discussion on the maintenance and fire.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson, um, Mr. Hanson.
Good evening, um, I just want to share a few benefits the city will get from this water main. In addition to serving those new customers and providing fire protection. We go to the next page. Maybe you can see it better in your staff report, but this is the area of second, of town we're talking about right here. This is the interstate gateway drive, as you can see, this entire area is fed through one water main, there's no interconnections, there's no overdone and steam whatsoever. Which is not a great layout, especially when you have large industry, River Bio Refinery is right here, um, C H S is right there. So we have some large industry that we're eating through a dead end line. The main, that's one problem is whenever we have to do maintenance in that area, we shut down the entire area. There's lots of customers under the service just to fix a water main break or a fire hydrant. Um, a loop would eliminate that, will allow water to come in from multiple directions, but the bigger concern is, um, in that area with just one feed, we don't have a lot of usage, so the water age gets high. Essentially, water ages when, how long it takes for a customer to use the water after we pump it out of the plant. So in that area, I just showed you, it takes around twenty days for the water to complete turnover. Um, your neighborhood in town for five days, so to combat that, we do a lot of flushing out there, in the summer, we'll be out there flushing water, um. Flushing's not bad if you're doing it controlled and um, just using it to clean water mains, but when you're just dumping water on the ground to freshen up the water mains, it's it's kind of waste, I mean, it's water that could be sold. Um, again, if we put the loop in on Twenty-seventh down to North Washington, water will throw, flow through that area over to the North, North Washington area. The water age would be reduced pretty significantly, so.
Yeah.
Just, just some added benefits that we would share, but I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Are those on the section of sixteen inch mains difference?
Yes, well, right here, this is already sixteen up here, and this is twelve, so it would be sixteen to twelve, it would still.
But the water tower is closer to, right?
Yep, water tower is, is right here.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, Chief Lorenz.
Good evening, Councilman Weber, members of the council, um. As we know, the annexed area up north doesn't have water currently, and so in order to provide that type of fire protection, should a fire break out, we have an agreement that we've put into place with the East Grand Forks Fire Department currently. And the way it's set up is when we have a call up in that area, a fire call, they are automatically dispatched and as part of the agreement, they're gonna bring their tanker truck up. Because obviously in a large fire, you're gonna go through a large volume of water. Each of our fire engines carries five hundred gallons of water, which typically within the community in a let's call it a room and contents fire in a residential structure, we can put on a lot of fire with less than five hundred gallons of water because it's contained. Once they become uncontained, then you're gonna need large quantities of water, not only to extinguish that fire, but more importantly, to protect the structures that are not on fire. Because given the weather conditions, strong winds of the, the fire load, all of those things. We generally, what we call protect the exposures around the fire to, to keep the fire from spreading. Uh, right now up in this area, we pre-planned this actually quite a lot bit, and the hydrant that we're gonna use is right on the corner of Bacon. And so if you look at the distance to the properties up there, it's a long ways. Each of our fire engines carries about four hundred feet of what we call large diameter hose, but we're exceeding that, and once you start to get into the thousands of feet that we are, we can't supply that with, with the hose that we have on our truck, so there's where the tanker comes in. And it's gonna, you know, take any of the properties up in this area, they would have to dump the tanker drop, set up a drop tank. The, the volunteer community is used this, they train with this all the time, they have tankers, they have drop tanks. And, and that's kind of how they operate, we have the luxury of the municipal water system, so we, let's call it an endless supply of water almost. So we have that huge advantage, right now with that area, we don't, and that's why we're relying on that tanker truck. If that makes sense. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Lorenz? Otherwise, uh, looking for a motion. On item, uh, four point, uh.
To accept and we'll move it to the third.
Yes.
I will.
We have a motion from Mrs. Sowsky, second from Mr. Kavami, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item four point one three, bid award for project number eight, four, eight, six, district number five, nine, zero, sanitary sewer for Highway eighty-one and associated area. Good evening.
Good evening, this is similar to the last project for the water main that will, you know, vote on it tonight and then it will go up to the April third meeting. Um, so this project is the sanitary, gravity sanitary sewer to serve the eighty-one annexation area. This project was proposed to be constructed in three phases, with bid as one project. The project was bid on March ninth with two alternatives, one to use that S R F financing and one to not use that S R F financing. Funding for this project will come from a city share and then the special assessment of that lot two block one or that hoofing property. Um, with me, I have Ben Williams with W F W, and he'll go over some of the bidding results. Uh, we only received one bid for this project and it was approximately eighty-two percent over the engineer's estimate. So we're recommending to pause on that and rebid it at a later time, and Ben will go over those.
So whatever, I move we reject the bids. Uh, we have a motion to reject the bids, second from Mr. Kavami. Any further discussion or comments? Doing that all in favor, yes, Mr. Vian.
The idea why? Um, it's, I know pricing is really volatile, materials, I mean, there's so many things that, that play into it. I think, put it together, an engineer's estimate is not easy either. Um, and, and so just some understanding.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Councilman Ravine, it has to do with the soils in that area. Our, our low bidder was R J Zavro, um, they recently did the pond up there. And when they were doing the excavation, they found that the clay was uh, extremely saturated. Um, they were having difficulties with the excavators sitting on the soil and not sinking in. Um, when the clay is removed, it's it just comes out as giant slabs. So we had looked in design, in other areas of town, we're able to excavate and then put that in a pile right beside the project. And after you put the pipe in, just put the material back on top of the pipe. With that clay being so saturated, they're unable to do that. So they were looking at having to truck the material offsite and then to have to bring dry material back in. That wasn't anticipated during design. Yeah, we have talked to them and found a few alternatives that may be able to help reduce the cost. Um, one other thing, that's why we only had one bidder. Um, had to do with the project lasting three um, seasons. So that made it difficult for contractors to anticipate what the cost was gonna be next year, whether it be fuel or labor or material. And even two years out is really tough. So that drove some contractors into a little bit indecision, not knowing what was gonna happen two, three years from now.
And so you anticipate changing it, so it isn't for three years, but do it on an annual type of basis for bidding as you go forward?
That was one thing we have looked at, breaking into um, smaller sections that are just that year timeframe, that would also allow for smaller contractors to bid. And then looking at um, other options for the material that has to be filled back in the hole.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, uh, we already have a motion on the floor, uh, any further questions? Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Uh, Ms. Peterson, item four point one four, bid award for project number eight, four, seven, six, sanitary lift station number forty-nine, enforcement.
Uh, thank you, so this project is the new sanitary lift station to serve that gravity, um, sanitary sewer that would tie into this lift station. Uh, we've built this project again last, uh, March ninth and received a couple different bids and Ben will go over those. But this lift station is very similar to our new stations in town that it's designed based on the acreage and not the user. Um, this stationally used for just messy users and uh, limited industrial users, so it's open for that um, annexed area. Um, like I said, we are recommending to move forward with schedule B of this project, which is the station itself. For rejecting the um, schedule C project bids that we received and Ben will go over those numbers.
Thank you, Councilman Member and rest of the council, um, for schedule B, we're looking at a, a general, um, I C S was a little bitter and only bitter for schedule B general, that came in at uh, just over three point nine million. Schedule B mechanical, we had one bidder, which is McFarland at a hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred. And then schedule B electrical, our little bidder was H and S Electrical at three hundred and four thousand, five hundred, that's S R F compliant. Um, we also did it, um, non-S R F compliance. Which had um, slightly lower numbers, again, I C S with uh, just over three million as a general, um, McFarland as the mechanical at a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred. And then H and S for schedule B electrical for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred. Um, these added up together on the non-S R F, these, this was just under um, the engineer's estimate by three thousand dollars. Um, for S R F, it, what we were, um, the engineer's estimate was under the bits. Um, some of this was trying to anticipate what S R F cost was gonna do to the project and the contractor was finding it was more than we had anticipated.
Questions, comments?
This is a little approval to this next meeting, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So April, I would say, just to be clear, but we want April third and we want the S R F compliant. Because there's, the differences are very small and um, not gonna be able to sell on for two percent over thirty years, so that's what we're asking for that schedule, so.
And second from Mizlinsky, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item four point one five, amendment number two for project number eight, four, seven, six, sanitary lift station number forty-nine, enforcement.
Thank you, so this amendment is for the construction services for that sanitary lift station and enforcement. Um, the previous amendment that we approved back on February twenty-second of last year did not include construction services, so that's just to get us to have W F W do the construction admin as we do on other projects.
Very good. Questions, comments? A motion for Mr. Kavami, second for Mr. Vian, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you again. Um, item five, City Council member discussion matters, uh, Mr. White.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Sowsky.
No, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Ms. Lunskey. Mr. Kavami, Mr. Vian.
A couple quick, very quick items, Mr. Phelan, I talked to you about giving, giving use of due diligence items and but you know, I still haven't gotten that to you, I apologize for this, but my intentions are having to do with.
And uh, just for the record, we, we are gonna meet with Epitome Energy and discuss the framework of the development agreement, so if you have uh, input, uh, now is a good time because we're gonna start working with them in earnest and I would anticipate the next third day. Yeah, sort of seeing some information come back.
Very good. President Sandy.
There's Mr. Phelan, if you would, I've got a quick question for you, when we were talking about the de-annexation, Mr. Phelan, you mentioned that the city assessments for the properties that were annexed in the n- n- north Highway eighty-one area, cities assess values, I think you even use the term considerably higher than what the county had them assessed at, is that, is that accurate?
That is true, and I, I think in that area, um, township has, um, was the assessor and I suspect the county at some point has to accept their, their assessments.
Is, is Ms. Lazar in, with us tonight, or?
She is, she is.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand how, how do we, how did the city assess those properties? How does the city, how, how can you justify that, that our, our assessment is considerably higher than what the, the county has them assessed at?
Well, typically, the county probably doesn't have as many sales to use in establishing values, um, with the, those properties are very similar to properties that we have within the city, so we have data, we have sales to support the values that we would put on them based on information that we have currently.
So, so your contention is that your, your estimated values are more accurate than what the county has those properties assessed at, is that accurate?
I believe that would be your statement.
Good, thank you, is Mr. Gustaf still, still in the audience?
He is, Mr. Gustaf.
Mr. Gustaf, and I, I'm curious, I thought that it was state law. I thought it was actually a law that you had to be assessed at give or take ninety-five percent of the value of the property, is that not accurate?
I believe there is a standard, I believe there's standard that they, through the equalization process, that they, once you get to the state, well, state equalization, they're looking and making sure that values are within that ninety-five percent range, I think that's the percentage.
So that, but, but then, that is actually the law, it's state law.
Don't, I don't hold on as whether it's a statute or if it's a policy to the equalization, but it's, it's the, what is, uh, is, is, again, is I understand it that there has to be within this, this range and you have to be within that ninety-five percent uh, valuation. And I, i- if you're not, I understand that the equalization board, the state will contact the, the assessor to find out why they're off or why they don't meet that criteria.
Thank you, so I'm, I'm not gonna ask Ms. Lazar to come out, she is still here, that's great, so.
So let me look, give you a little context on your, what you asked. The state law is with our sales ratio study, with the sales that have happened within the past year, we need to be within ninety to a hundred percent of those values. So based on those sales in that timeframe is what we use for statistical data to apply market adjustments. So we have, we are required by state law to be between ninety and a hundred percent based on those sale. Our sales that happened in the past year have to be, our median ratio has to be between ninety and a hundred percent.
Okay. Again, I'm not gonna dwell on it, I just find it very peculiar that there's, when, when it's law, but then there's such a significant difference between what we're, we have them assessed at or anticipating than versus the county, thank you, Ms. Lazar and, and Mr. Gustaf, I really appreciate it. I, I'd be interested to know, is, I mean, so the city of Grand Forks is, I can't remember exactly, but we're like eighty, some eighty-five percent of the population of the county. But still, if the county, I mean, just looking at, uh, looking at the numbers um, in this spreadsheet of a very small area of, of the county, the, the, the difference in valuation is significant, anywhere on the spreadsheet provided tonight, between twenty and fifty percent low. Even if the the, if all across the whole county, they're be- between twenty and fifty percent low, that's a significant amount of people that, for example, are getting a significant tax break on school districts, the school districts are being shorted significantly. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Weber, I appreciate your, your diligence and your. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Weber. I appreciate your, your diligence and your time.
Very good. Thank you, President Sandy. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion from uh Mr. Weigle and second from Mr. Sowsky, all in favor signify by saying aye. We're out of here, thanks.